All right, welcome. If everybody could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, will you open the prayer?
Heavenly fathers, we come to you, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here, and, Lord, we ask that you would help us as we go through these things to be nonjudgmental and to move on doing the work of the county and try to get the things that are best, in the best interest of the citizens of this area. Lord, help us to make the right decisions and to go in a direction that you would have us to go in. We ask these things in your precious name, and amen.
Amen, thank you. So, good morning, it's August 28th. I know there's a lot of interest regarding the recent indictments of Commissioner Davis and his wife. We'll address those at the end after we get through the business of the county. With that said, we'll go ahead and jump into approving the meeting minutes of August 21st.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
And I will vacate the chair to second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds?
Any comments or questions on item two? Hearing none.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds?
Any comments or questions on item three? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of funds?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers?
Any comments or questions on our fund transfers? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve fund transfers.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of advance requests?
Any comments or questions on item five? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve the request for advance?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, moral obligations, and then annoue certificates in the total amount of $1,3270.20.
Any comments or questions on the document? Hearing none.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of certification of unpaid sewer rates and charges regarding sanitary engineer?
So, we have our listing of unpaid sewer rates, 30 days delinquent, and excess balance of over $100. These do get certified by the Board of County Commissioners and placed on the property tags and against the properties. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission?
Any comments or questions on the amended certificate? Hearing none.
Make a motion to accept the amended certificate?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notice to the bidders for SCI CR 503-0.00 Ohio River Road Phase II Safety Project, PID 123460, federal project number E250417, regarding Sota County Engineer?
This is the notice to proceed to the Shelley Company for the High River Road Phase II Safety Project. I think most people recognize that Phase I was down around Progers on Ohio River Road. This is the other side of Ohio River Road, the west side. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing a fund for the SCI CR 160-0.75 Fort Hill Road Slip Repair Project regarding the Sota County Engineer?
Now, this is just setting up a line item for the grant funding that our county engineer received, $2.5 million of OPWC emergency funds. This is regarding the Fort Hill Slip Project. So, this is just creating a line item for those funds to go into. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to just say kudos to the county engineer for moving this project along as fast as it's been moved along.
Thank you for that. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notice to the legislative authority from the High Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, regarding Lincoln Property Holdings LLC Fred's Pizza Restaurant?
Any comments or questions on item 11? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution to approve the receipt of an HB2 One-Time Strategic Community Investment Grant regarding the Sheriff's Office?
This was a grant received through House Bill 2 for one-time strategic community investment in the amount of $696,000 to upgrade our 911 communication center. Sheriff, welcome to the meeting today. So, to accept that, this is to help update the 911 systems within the county. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between Frontier Communications of America, Inc., and the Board of Sota County Commissioners for equipment purchase and installation and maintenance schedule regarding 911?
At the requestment of the sheriff, this is the purchase for the 911 safety equipment through the strategic accounts, strategic community investments, excuse me. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of change order for the alterations to the clerk of courts legal department?
We do have a change order for the project with clerk of courts office, a change order from CTB, Inc., for the following amount of $6,317.71. This amount will be deducted from an allowance of $7,500 in the contract, no cash change order. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution declaring 2026 dog license fee, one year, three year, and permanent license fee for Sota County, Ohio?
This is to increase the dog license fee, kennel fees, for the county to get us more in line with our surrounding counties. So, currently, it's $12 per dog, up to 14. Late penalty is currently 12, that'll go up to 14. It is $40 for the ORC, that's the kennel fee, that goes up to $70. And then, the penalty for the kennel fee goes up to 70 as well. Once again, this gets us in line with our neighbors and the surrounding community. And these funds help generate revenue for the dog pound. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of agreement between the Board of Sota County Commissioners and Coleman Sanitation Services?
This is an agreement for dumpster pickup, essentially. It's a savings to the county of a hundred some dollars a month. Appreciate our maintenance director for looking into this and finding ways to save. This will be a total of $450 a month, down from $668. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of authorizing the clerk to advertise notice to bidders for the purchase of engineer tired loader regarding the Sota County Engineer?
So, the engineer is looking for a rubber tire loader, excuse me. This is a notice to bidders, we'll place this out for advertisement, and then they can respond accordingly. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of 2025 Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan Biennial Review, JFS?
So, this is a Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan. This is the biennial review that Timon Moore Martin oversees and reviews, and then it does require our sign off. Appreciate their hard work in reviewing this and providing the document to us. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of appointment to the Land Reutilization Board?
So, the land bank, as most people know, the Land Reutilization Board. Currently, it's a makeup of five members. Right now, we have the city manager, we have township trustee, the treasurer of the county, who vacates next week, and we have our new treasurer here, Joey Sandlin, will be eventually stepping into that role, according to ORC. And it does require two commissioners. Commissioner Kathy Coleman, the late Commissioner Coleman, was on the board. The other commissioner is Commissioner Brian Davis. So, we do need to appoint someone to this board to ensure that they will have a quorum moving forward while we kind of navigate the legal issues of Commissioner Davis. Any thoughts, Commissioner Smith?
No, nothing other than I'm not ready to go on there, so I make a motion we appoint you to that position.
We'll let you play that game a little longer, but I appreciate that. There's a lot of good work happening there in the land bank. The Relsa Trails project is living there right now. The brownfield remediation, we do have a lot of cleanup and tear down that flows through that board. So, I appreciate the opportunity to serve there. So, you had a motion, I will second my appointment to the land bank.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of second revised and repealed resolution for the Sota County Commissioners to designate seven parcels of real property within Washington Township regarding seat and development?
So, we revised this last week, but I think we missed something. This is regarding the seat and development, everyone on the west side. This is the senior apartments, so I think we had a typo in there. So, it's just a cleanup resolution. It is still for CRA, for that property, community revitalization zone, and it'll help support that property and get additional senior living in our community. Initially, I think it's 57 units, phase two is another 57 units. It's greatly needed for our community and our senior population to have an opportunity to move into more manageable space. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing the chairman of the Board of Sota County Commissioners to file applications with the High Department of Transportation for all federal and state grants administered by the ODOT Office of Transit by executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval regarding ASC?
This is just regarding any grant approval that goes through the ASC, and authorizing the chairman to sign and file those applications. This is something that's pretty common business that we do, but we do have to update it. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
I make a motion we adopt?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. I do want to add item 22, our clerk of courts Kathy Schuper came up before the meeting. Typically, we don't slide things in late, but this is, it's, in my estimate, it's not that big of a deal. She's dealing with a credit card issue where her fees are jumping. She would like to get a different credit card, very small balance of $1,000 to help with some of her processing requirements down there. Since the county owns the EIN, she needs our blessing to, our blessing to apply for the low balance credit card. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. All right, that is the business for today. We do, we have a lot of visitors here today, so I kind of want to walk through how we are a little different than probably most governmental agencies that you could come to a public meeting. We do allow answering question. It is items on agenda first, items off agenda next. I do have a bid opening at 10:15, so if we do run into the 10:15 bid opening, I will cut questions for that time and then reconvene. I do know we have a hard stop at 11:00, so we should be able to get through quite a bit of the questions and materials. Before we jump to questions, though, I know that the lingering question is regarding Commissioner Davis and his indictments. I think you've probably already seen my public statement and the public statement of Commissioner Smith calling for his immediate resignation. We have no authority in the matter to force a resignation. I want that to be very clear, regardless of our stance on it. And I'm not making a judgment call whether or not I think he is innocent or guilty. That is not my stance. My stance is that in February, we fired an individual- My stance is that in February, we fired an individual, uh, for the exact same reason, not a, not a close to same reason, literally exact same reason, when we terminated Robert Horton. There were John Does and Jane Does mentioned in his indictment. Those John Does and Jane Does are now, um, public, and it's, uh, Commissioner Davis and his wife. So by the same standard in which we fired Robert Horton from his position without pay, I still believe that the standard should maintain for Commissioner Davis. I, I do not believe that public officials should have a different set of rules, unfortunately, we do. And I'll talk through those rules, um, in just a second. So that's, that's current where we're at. In terms of the next steps, um, the Ohio revise code spells out what happens next. It's ORC 316, higher vice code 316 spells out if a public official is indicted by felony, it is required for the prosecuting attorney, and in this case, special prosecutor, to file with the Supreme Court of Ohio. The Supreme Court of Ohio can then, then has to convene a three judge panel of retired judges. They have to look at the matter and determine if this person stays in position, does it impact the office in which they serve? And are the indictments directly related to their service? I think we can all have an opinion on that, but that is the process. There is a, so should Commissioner Davis not resign, the, the next best step, I believe, is that he could voluntarily go on leave with pay. And then once again, it is leave with pay, even if the judge is determined, so. So he could voluntarily do that, it would expedite the, the unknown, uh, that we're currently dealing with in terms of next steps. It, uh, removes him from the equation for us to move forward with the county's business and, and be able to, uh, start problem solving of who may be sitting in this chair, um, next, uh, be it permanent or temporary. So that's, that's an option. Should he choose not to do that, it is still up to the three panel judges at the Supreme Court level to deem, uh, if a leave with pay is needed. That is, you know, once again, I have strong feelings that, uh, Mr. Horton did not have that benefit of being indicted and still receiving pay, but, uh, yet for a public official, apparently that's, uh, that's just in the law currently. And it is out of our purview. Should a ju, panel of judges put him on leave, um, if he is innocent, he gets to come back. If he is guilty, um, he would then have to pay back everything that was paid to him by the county. So that is a decision that I'm sure is happening somewhere. I have not heard from Commissioner Davis to this point, um, I don't believe our clerk has. Commissioner Smith, uh, not to speak for you, I know you received a text early just saying, uh, he, he won't be here today. I do know that his office is cleaned out of his personal effects, that happened sometime Tuesday night. But in terms of an indicator of where they're at, what, what he is choosing to do, uh, that is still unknown to us at this time. So that is first and foremost, uh, kind of where we're at and what the process looks like. Would I love to weigh in on that? Sure would, and we, we made our, our thoughts known, um, it is not in our purview to do that, uh, and, and within our scope of practice. So there's that. Since we've already started this, this way, I'm going to flip flop how we take questions, we'll go ahead and jump to items not on agenda. Uh, we have a lot of media here, I want to be mindful of your time, I know several of you drove in hours to be here, it is uh, a hot topic item anytime a public official is indicted, especially to this magnitude, so I want to be mindful of the media that's here. But I do want to offer Bill Shup the first opportunity to come to the podium, the way we do this, if you're asking questions, I just ask you to come to the podium, state who you are, and then we'll move forward. Bill Shup has been with us since the beginning, so Bill Shup, it's only fitting that, uh, I give you the, the first shot at it.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the commissioners for their directness and, uh, transparency in the communications that came forward last week, late last week, and over the weekend, because I think that's helped in a lot of ways about cutting down some of the gossip and misinformation that's out there. And Commissioner Powell, thank you for the prepared comments, although you took my first four questions. But that's okay. But still on this same matter, um, there was a county employee that had his position terminated, um, shortly after making some complaints, and of course, we're talking about Mark Ward. And I know that, uh, I gained access to the deposition, uh, in district court, uh, that came through, and there were a lot of details in there. But I was wondering if, uh, Scotty, if you would mind commenting on some of it, Merritt, I know that you were not in the scene at that time.
As my card.
Yes, I know you are. Looking through that, there was not a court that found any malfeasance on Mr. Ward's part. As a matter of fact, the original charges against him legally have been dismissed. So what I guess I'm asking is just for clarification, not that I believe that the commissioners did anything wrong, but I know, I noted in the deposition and in the court records that Mr. Moore did not get the same opportunity as Horton did to defend himself in front of the commissioners on the charges initially. I don't know if that's because he was barred from being on county property or what, but he wasn't allowed those same opportunities, I was wondering why.
Yeah, and I, Bill, I don't want to get too much into the legal piece of it, you know, there was a lawsuit, there was a settlement that our insurance settled regarding Mr. Ward, uh, so I'm going to speak in generalities. Back then, we, we took action on the information we had. You know, we can go back and wonder why we got the information the way we did, or how it was spun at the time, um, but at that time, I took action based on the information I had, and I, and I don't even want to bring up the allegations, because, once again, those have been dropped, expunged, whatever it was. Even back then, there were even protection orders issued, um, regarding Mark Ward and some of our employees, so, um, once again, the, the actions we took was the information we had. Uh, in terms of the difference between Mr. Ward and Mr. Horton regarding the removal from SOPA, um, quite frankly, we, we didn't follow the process right. Mr. Ward should have had a, a hearing, um, he should have had the opportunity, he did not. From that lesson, we learned that Mr. Horton, even though indicted with multiple felony accounts, we still needed to follow the appropriate process, so, um, that wasn't a county employee issue, that was a removing from the Southern Ohio Port Authority Board issue, and that we did not follow that process correctly.
Okay, and a follow-up to that, and again, I'm just asking for clarification, because there's so much misinformation out there. You know me well enough, that's what I like to attack. But you know, at the time, for some of the media that's not, that's here today, that may not have been present at that time. You know, Commissioner Davis had made the, uh, the recommendation to remove Mark Ward from his position after Mark Ward had, in essence, acted as a whistleblower, uh, with legal provider here in the county. He wasn't even at the meeting when he submitted the recommendation through a correspondence, is my understanding, through the deposition. And, you know, again, this is a case of someone whistleblowing on a commissioner. And the head of the economic development department, as well as the Southern Ohio Port Authority, and the person that was whistleblowing on is the one that submitted the, the recommendation for his removal. And I just wondered if you had any comment on that?
I have comments, I'm not going to share them today, I, I think it, I think it reopens, uh, litigation that we've already went through. But yeah, I mean, we can, we can go back and draw parallels of why we think things have happened based on the current indictments and start painting everything with that same brush, and I understand that, I understand the willingness to do that. The, the reality is, um, we had an allegation, a very serious allegation, once again, I'm not going to report it, um, or, or speak it, for the, for the sake of Mr. Ward, because once again, all those things were dropped. But in, in real time, um, you know, put on leave of pay, actually resigned from his position, um, the issue was not, uh, we, we didn't follow the program procedure for removing him from, from the port authority.
Okay, and just one last question for me, um, off the agenda. When it, when it comes to Commissioner Davis, if he does not submit a resignation, uh, what is, again, for clarification, what are the number of meetings that he can miss consecutively before?
So. Yeah, if he's put on paid administrative leave by court, it's, it's until the legal issue is resolved.
But that could be a while, couldn't it?
It could be a while, so the, the, the ORC does provide the opportunity, so i- if the court, or the judges rather, put him on leave with pay, um, the, the Republican Party, because that is the party he's, uh, associated with, has the opportunity to appoint someone. Very similar to the appointment process we just saw with, uh, Commissioner Smith and even myself, you know, five years ago. So while he's on paid administrative leave, uh, there could still be somebody sitting here, and we would be essentially paying, uh, the county would be paying for both of them.
Without the services?
Uh, without the services of one, correct.
All right. We are going to ask an agenda question later?
If we get there, Bill.
And again, thank you very much, both of you, for your transparency and willing to, willingness to, to comment and come forward, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, Mr. Scott Leith, I'm sure you probably want to go ahead. Mr. Leith has been with us for a while now covering this, so, welcome back.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it, uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief, uh, given the nature of the allegations involving Commissioner Davis, uh, does the board intend to conduct a review of the projects and bodies that he was heavily involved in?
That's a great question, um, I, I think by default, we have to look at anything that's currently in flight, um, stuff that have already happened, um, quite frankly, it's going to be up to the investigators to determine if there was, uh, any wrong, wrongdoing there. I, I don't know that we have the ability to go back and ring the bell on, on some of that, buildings are already built, things have, you know, awards have already happened, so, anything that is not yet, um, completed, kind of in, in flight, I, I think it's our due diligence to, to review all of that.
Thank you, uh, let me clarify, I mean, like, for example, the land bank where Commissioner Davis was the city commissioner, maybe things that are outside the scope of criminal investigation, uh, such as unethical behavior or patterns?
No, I understa, I understand, so, I haven't been on the land bank, so, you just heard I got appointed today, so.
Congratulations.
Great, uh, thank you, uh, so we'll be, I, I think it's within all boards that he served on that they should be looking at it. Some of the boards, and quite frankly, I need, I think he needs to resign from all of them, um, land bank, uh, JUDISO, County Commissioners Association, SEBCO, um, I don't know if there's any others, but I, I think for the sake of those organizations to move forward and be comfortable moving forward without, um, the specter of, of what's going on, uh, I think, uh, with, with the right amount of integrity, he would go ahead and step down, uh, from those organizations as well. Uh, we don't appoint to all of those organizations, uh, they, they're all kind of their own entities and have their own rules about how somebody's removed. But I do know that there, I, I've talked to a couple of those boards, and they are reviewing their process and making sure that they're looking at, how do you remove somebody that, that's been indicted?
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have.
Thanks, Scott. All right, at this point, is there any additional questions? Gil, uh, if you're going to ask a question, please come to the podium, sir. If I'm going to be on your camera, you got to be on mine, come on up to.
Uh, this is, uh, usually, you know, I'm, I've got 30 years in this business, and, um, I've been, um, I was told or taught to, you, you keep quiet at, uh, public meetings, but, uh, what I wanted to ask you is, would you be available, uh, after the meeting for us to do an interview with you?
Uh, potentially, I, I know we have a schedule, so I guess it depends on how long, uh, this process takes, we're, we're trying to be as transparent and open as possible. Like I said, this, this doesn't happen anywhere else, and normally, people get to stand up and talk for five minutes, and then, then the different entities say, great, thanks for your comments, and then you, and then folks sit down.
That's, that's what they talk about.
I appreciate that, um, so, potentially, I guess, is my answer. Yeah, this is, it's a very rare situation where you have this type of back and forth in, in a public meeting, so, and I appreciate everybody showing up.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're in a time, then.
You can ask whatever you want.
Uh, I, 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 I let you ask.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, Gil. Uh, any additional questions? Items not on agenda? Uh, we have other reporters in the room, nothing at this time? Okay. Yes, sir, please stand at the podium.
Ross Hamilton?
Hey, Ross.
Good day. Uh, I'm not comfortable with the process we have in our system right now, and that process being, when a seat comes open, how it's filled, I understand the process, that we don't have to like it. Now, I know, when you have a party seat open, that party chooses, I think it should go to the special election, and let the general public be involved in the voting process of who's in that seat. And it's not, nothing against gentleman who's just appointed, but I think in this country, we need the voters to decide instead of the heads of a party. The second part of this leads into this is, and I don't know if it can be done, but I feel now, after everything we've seen, not just here, but across the country, we have three seats here. I think one should be designated as a Republican Party seat in election time, and one should be designated as a Democrat seat at election time. And this third, third seat should be an open seat that could go to any party, then we have a diversity on our county commissioners boards, and we have different eyes, different thoughts, and different way of looking at things, plus, I don't know if it would stop what's in the process right now, but it sort of puts, puts a check and balance in there. Can that be done?
I, I would say at the legislative level, anything could be done, would there be an appetite to do it's the other question, so I, if, if that's a recommendation, I, I think reaching out to Representative Pizzuli, Senator Johnson. We don't create law here at this board, we, we are bound by the Ohio revise code. To your point about the party appointing, um, so the, the, the position that, um, Merritt is currently filling is, is actually not up next year. The way the appointment process works in Ohio is that you can be appointed up to the next even year election, so it is, the voters are going to get a say in the seat, um, first in a primary and then in a general next year, and then whoever would win that would then have to run again to finish out the term. So, you know, there is a mechanism to ensure the business of the county continues, especially when a vacancy happens, um, and there's an expedited election process that happens too. You called a special election, that's essentially what it is, um, the seat he's currently sitting in would not have been on the ballot next year, uh, had it not been for the unfortunate passing of Commissioner Coleman.
See, I think that's a little bit of an unfair, if any twin seat is appointed, because then that person that's appointed to that seat sort of has an upper hand on everybody else running by being a seated, uh, seating, or seated in a position politically, you know, and I think that's an unfair advantage, and it may not be, but I just think it needs to be a little bit different.
Understood.
And as far as your legislation at the state level, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, our two representatives in the state, I mean, four phone calls to each one, never returned a call, requested a phone call, never returned a call, and here we are today, being in the office, silence, I hear crickets. And they won't return calls to address issues that are put out there. And that's not their job, they're there to represent, represent us. Now, the person that's answering the phones takes the information, they're supposed to give it to, to the state, and you don't want a silence. Thank you, it's free of time.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for your comments. Any additional questions off agenda that's in the room? Sure.
My name's Joshua Ramey from Lucasville, I just had the free day off, so I just came to see the drama, to see the person as a, uh, as a citizen or whatever, but while I'm here, you, and, uh, I want to ask you about a project that's near and dear to my heart, you kind of mentioned it, just briefly, the Relsa Trails project, I know this is a very, a very lengthy project, I've actually went and checked out some of it myself, and I, I do some trail maintenance out of Shawnee State Forest, so, um, I know this will be a very, very long project, but I would love to see that in our area, and I think a long distance, nice gravel bike trail is something that this area is missing. And I think a long-distance, nice gravel bike trail is something that this area is missing. I was just curious, like, for an update, or what your thoughts on where this process is at this moment.
No, I appreciate your, I appreciate your interest in it, Josh. It's a project near and dear to my heart, that rail line ran behind my house growing up, out in Notway. I've chased Norfolk Southern for four years and finally got them to agree to donate the 21-mile peavine to the county. It's currently sitting in the land bank for concerns that if there are any EPA issues, that's the only place it can live, sure that should there be an EPA, the land bank can't be held liable for any EPA issues. So it's currently going through a Phase 1 EPA assessment. Don't really expect that they'll find anything, just in case. From that, the Norfolk Southern has to file with the Transportation Board to abandon the line. We then have a timeline where we have to file to secure the corridor, and then Norfolk Southern still has to go in, take up the rail, take up the ties, which probably take a year to do so. The reality is, it's ours, not yet on paper, but they've already agreed to donate it, and we've already signed some donation agreements. The timeline, it's all paperwork at this point, it's all filings with the Transportation-
We're definitely talking years, though.
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And then it's, how do you pay for it? You know, it's 21 miles, it's a lot. We just helped pay for a mile trail, a little over a mile trail out in Notway a couple of years ago, and that was close to $100,000, so you do the math real quick, not counting the bridges, not counting the safety of the bridges and securing those up and getting the deck down. But it is something that is super exciting for myself, and I think the community, we would instantly go from not having anything like this to having a top 20 trail in the state of Ohio. And there's 290-some Rails to Trails projects currently in the state, and we'd be top 20. So, a lot to do.
Right.
Sounds like you're volunteering, I'll put you down.
Oh, I'll give, the Connex people, I know they're involved, so I'm going to definitely help out any way that I can. Is it, do you anticipate that it's going to be like a compact gravel, or is it going to be paved, or is there a point or do you know that?
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, it's a funding issue, so we'll be left with the gravel bed, so we'll already be left with the corridor and the gravel bed once they take up the rail and the tie. It'll probably be gravel at first, just for cost, and then if we can and when funding allows, just start chunking it up. I know Connex is committed to helping with some fundraising and grant writing, so, you know, it's chunking it off, but securing it was the first major hurdle. You typically don't get a rail line, especially this long. One, able to buy it, let alone somebody donated to you, so.
Is there any, like, where the southern terminus will be? So I think it's, when it comes to Portsmouth, it's that old main rail line that comes behind Bobbitt Village, it kind of terminates that OSKO.
So there's still a live line there. Essentially, it would run from Reardon just to the other side of the main trussel, so there would have to be some sort of turnaround and back to the west side. There, in terms of engineering, how to get it up and over the trussel or around, that's going to be a major issue.
So it will not cross that bridge behind the Stackmore?
No, it'll cross the bridge, but it won't cross the, there's a live rail that runs behind there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so we won't be able to get close to that, which, of course, but-
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate the question. Any other questions, items not on agenda? Anything online, not on agenda, probably not? No? Items off, or on agenda? We'll go backwards. On agenda? All right, Bill Shug, your-
Yeah, I just have a real quick one about the Fort Bill project.
Yeah.
Was it mentioned when that would be finished? So I'd like to update that.
Oh, Engineer LeBron, I don't know, is the real quick answer?
I'll shoot him any-
Yeah, please reach out to Engineer LeBron. So, it's amazing how fast they've moved on that and was able to secure the $2.5 million. I think literally within a week of that huge slip happening. It's a major problem, but the fact that they're moving on it and getting the line items, I think, but in terms of the timeline, I don't know. I mean, I could say next week, and he would kill me, so I know it's not that.
I'll shoot him. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, so no other questions in the room? Out of the room?
There are a couple, but I'm trying to, Facebook is trying to keep up.
Facebook keeps moving. There's a lot of comments, but no questions is what you're getting hit with, it sounds like?
Yeah.
So we can't see that, just so you know, so we rely on our clerk to read any questions that may come through.
So there's one from Sen Macley.
Yeah.
But let me grab it, because it keeps moving on me. I'm not going to be able to read it. Everybody keeps commenting, and they keep shifting them down.
So we'll make an effort to read all of those comments and respond, or we'll even address them next week. I'm sure as this continues, there'll continue to be more questions and interest into the proceedings. We do have a bid opening in five minutes, so I do want to allow Commissioner Smith. So we always close with any ongoing updates you want to provide, any comments, thoughts? I've spoke a lot. Let's hear your wisdom, sir.
First, I'd like to apologize for not saying a whole lot, but I've not been here. So I keep playing that card, and that's not going to last much longer, but I apologize for having to allow Scotty to do that. One thing I do want to mention, and the Vern Rife School is going to be having a fundraiser on October the 23rd, and it's a pie in the face to someone, and I have been nominated to be one of those pie in the face people. And so if you're out there online and you want to see me get a pie in the face, you go to, to the Vern Rife on the following part of it, and you can vote for me, and if I get enough votes, then I get a pie in the face. And I'm supposed to be talking some smack to the principal over at Portsmouth High School, Angel King. I don't know, but I don't know Angel personally, but anyone that's a principal at the school, I know that they probably just loaf around a lot and don't do a whole lot of stuff, so...
Did Scotty donate?
I don't, I don't know if he did or not, but-
I didn't even know it was a thing.
But-
But I'll be donating.
But anyway, you can, if you want to see me get a pie in the face, you can call, contact them, and I don't even think at the time you have to donate money. All you have to do is just vote for me to-
Even better.
-to get the pie in the face. But the day of the following celebration, if you're there and you want to make sure I get a pie in the face, then it's going to cost you some money. So anyway, that, I want to promote that, let you know that that's coming up, probably going to get me a pie in the face on the 23rd of October. But, and also, I'd like to mention, we have River Days coming up this weekend, the fish fry tomorrow. There's a number of things coming up, and I'd like to say to the news media, it's great to have you here, and, you know, we've got Scott and Bill here in the front row, they're here almost every time we have a meeting. It's great to have you here, but it would be great to have you here when we have some really good stuff to talk about. And so if, you know, if you're wandering around Sota County and you don't have any place else to go on Thursdays, you could come here and maybe we could have some good information to give out to you, so we could do things for positive for the county, because that's been my whole thing, is I want to be positive for the county and I want to be transparent as we go through this thing. If there is anything that I know about, I'll be transparent, I'll let you know that. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We do have two minutes, so I'll try to fill them. I guess my closing thought is, you know, what has happened and occurred over the past week is not indicative of Sota County. It is not a reflection of who we are. It is frustrating that the actions of a few cloud the amazing efforts of so many people in our county, and since the news media's here, I'll rattle some off. We have a great group out in Reardon that nobody ever talks about that feed hundreds of people every day, the Reardon Daily Bread. We have a great group that's cleaning up the Sota Brush Creek, and it's probably going to be a scenic river soon due to their hard efforts in cleaning up that waterway. We have a group of leaders out in Lucasville from Glow that said, "Hey, you know what? We want a park." And not only did they build a park, but they built an amazing park with an amphitheater, and they still have much more to do. Here locally, we have another park, water, a private park being built at the Market Square. These are all volunteer groups. I haven't even hit with what some of the organizations are doing. We have the Willsburg Community Partnership, we have the Trillium Project. We have thousands of people working hard to make our community better. And yet, we allow the actions of a couple to bring us down, to bring that energy down, to cloud the good work of so many, and that is the most frustrating part of this, because I view our positions up here where we should be the ones leading the charge of that positive change. So it hits a little different when someone up here potentially takes advantage of their seat and their opportunity to enrich themselves. But it is not indicative of who we are. We have a lot of great things ahead of us. There's a lot of positive things I can't wait to talk about, but by the nature of what they are, I can't talk about them. You know, the thing Shawnee State's doing, we could have a D2 football team in two years. That's crazy. They're going to be dropping millions of dollars into Spartan Stadiums, donor dollars. We just got $34 million awarded last week. Thank you for the time. $34 million last week on the Riverfront Project. Great things are happening, so don't allow the actions of a few. Change your perception of really what's happening in this community. This community is moving forward. We have great investment happening. Just look at Chilla Coffee Street with the Cricker Innovation Hub, Marting's. You have the museum that's going through a multimillion-dollar expansion. That's without the government's help. That's people stepping up and choosing to do what's right in spite of what may be happening on this side of the table. And to lump everybody together, that's, for me, that's probably the most frustrating part of this. It is part of the position, Commissioner Smith, that we get to deal with, and we will navigate and get through. But remember and look for the good in this community, because there's so much, and there's a lot that I didn't even mention. So thanks for coming out. We do have a bid opening. Hey, JP, come on in. JP, it's all you, buddy. We're at the bid opening section. These cameras are not here for you, so, thank you, sir. We do have a bid opening for Riverstone Subdivision Sanitary Sewer. So we'll go through this part of our meeting, and then if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. JP, welcome.
My first bid is GNH Construction. I want some bid at $241,704.25. Next bid is Wilson Escalade. $333,710. Little's Escalade.
We only have three bids?
Yep.
All right. This time, the bid opening is no longer. I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Smith, to forward the bids to our sanitary engineer for review and recommendation.
I will make the motion when we forward those bids.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. That's the end of our meeting. Please go enjoy River Days. There's been a lot of time, energy, and effort focused on that. It will be back on the Riverfront very soon, but enjoy River Days, the pageant, the parade. Get out, create memories. And thank you all for your interest in our meetings, and as Commissioner Smith said, don't be strangers. We have good stuff happening here too, guys. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Thanks so much, have a great weekend.